...law for authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipality law section 3C. Give me a second, I'll find it. Okay, is there any questions?
I do have a few questions for Corporation Counsel or perhaps the administration. So my understanding is with a tax levy increase past the 2%, that's when we would need to approve this proposal. Is there any indication of how far past the 2% we're looking at? Is it another 300,000 in revenue we're looking to raise? Or is it 3 million we're looking to raise, just to get an idea of the percentage over the 2% cap?
I don't know that answer. I didn't prepare this piece. I don't know, Mike, do you have a...
I mean, it's certainly significant when we're talking double-digit taxing.
The levy or the rate?
The rate.
And how does that translate to the levy? If we're talking levy in terms of total increase in revenue across the board. My understanding is looking at the audit numbers. There was about 30 million in total real property revenue last year. Compared to that, what percentage over the 30 million are we looking at?
Can I answer that? So technically, the Comptroller's Office has to come up with the formula for the actual 2%. So technically, it's not an actual 2% tax levy. It could be 5%, it could be 6%, it could be .5%. So that's a formula that Corporation Counsel, or excuse me, the Comptroller's Office would have to formulate. My suggestion would be that you lay this on the table, because you can't take any action on it tonight. And then you could make that determination after the mayor presents his budget to the Board of V and A on Tuesday. This still needs a 60% waiver to override. So you can't vote on it until, I believe it would be the following meeting, because you have to call for the public hearing at the next council meeting. So you might actually go into the March council meeting before you could actually vote on this. So you would have a better understanding, if that makes sense, to make that determination.
Just procedurally, too, my understanding is if the council passes this, a public meeting is subsequent to the council passing what's being proposed.
Say that again.
So my understanding is if the council were to pass this, a public meeting would take place subsequent to that passing, just procedurally in order of what to expect.
That's what any local law, so this follows the same procedure as a local law. Then the mayor still has it seven days to override the veto. But this, you actually have to input what the actual percentage is. They include, they ask to have that included. So I mean, that percentage point could change. Like normally, the percentage rate of a 1% tax increase is like 320,000. So those are all formulas that have to be calculated depending on what the actual tax levy would be. So normally in the past, and this kind of gets a little convoluted in the reasoning of a tax cap override, is because a majority of the time, say, for example, the mayor presents us with a million-dollar tax increase override, right? Or a million dollars over what the tax cap levy actually is. If the council can't come up with that tax rate to come over, to lower that, past that $1 million, the city then gets penalized in your reasoning. So my suggestion is, and this is just past practice of whether or not I supported a budget, is to kind of just give ourselves a little bit of leeway. And it's not saying that you have to override the 2% tax cap. This is just kind of a supporting measure. And like I said, whether or not I've supported the mayor's budgets in the past or not, I had no problem overriding the tax cap levy to give this council a little bit of protection for the simple fact that we don't have that much time from the time that the budget's proposed to us to kind of make those corrections. And at the end of the day, I think that the financially responsible thing to do as a council person is to override it and to give yourself that room in case you can't go over, in case you can't limit that to that rate so that the taxpayers aren't penalized twice. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So is there any objections of putting this in committee tonight?
My suggestion would be to lay it on the table. That way, we give ourselves enough time.
That's right.
Whether or not you want to support it or not.
Okay, thank you.
And I did make that correction before, because it did say April was the one that was presented to us, and this wasn't drafted by...
This wasn't drafted by Corporation Counsel. This was the one that the mayor had sent down in 2018. And I don't know if we ever, I can't remember that far back. And I don't know if he just proposed it or if we voted on it or not. But I just made that amendment, so you'll see that this was proposed as a new piece under the tax levy limit override, where it says April 1st, 2024, that originally said April 1st, 2018. Okay, so your original packet, I already had them just submit it with that amendment already in there, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you. The next piece is another local law, number two, which is a local law to establish the boundaries of the council districts in the City of Utica.
I know this was Judge Garamone's piece that he sent on behalf of his, the city council attorney, and it was sponsored by the majority leader and minority leader. So I actually stopped down, and I don't know if you guys have a copy of the actual district maps. But there was a little piece that I had gotten from the planning department from the county. And you'll see District 3 and District 5. And those maps are going to be the districts that would have to be changed. General Municipal Law specifically states that any council district that has a limit of 5% or more should be changed according to the census and what the council actually adopts. Now, there's a population difference for the first ward, which is 4.6%. You've got the third ward, which is 13.8%, and the 15th ward, which is a population deviation of 18.9%. So according to the census and this recommendation of redistricting, the third ward and the fifth ward have to be done. That's kind of most definite if the council does decide to take any action. The first ward has a population deviation of 4.6%. My suggestion would be so that we don't cause any more confusion amongst the population of the first ward with polling locations and where their districts are. I would just suggest doing the third and the fifth ward and leaving the first ward at the same because it is under that 5% rate that general municipal home rule law has to keep us under. So that's up to the council, obviously, the first ward council person. It's their district that they represent, but that would just be my suggestion, would just to be the third and the fifth ward. And you'll see, I don't know if the map that Judge Garamone had printed out, because I think that those are just individual districts for the proposed redistricting map. But I had the one printed out. And you'll see that the third ward, just, there's like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 streets that will be taken out of the third ward and added to the fifth ward. Because the population did decrease in the third ward. I think it was like 1,517, and the fifth ward increased to 2,071. So you have to add those streets in there, which would be Holland Ave, Thomas Street, Francis, or Newell, or Ju, Baxton, Scott, and Grand Street. Would have to be in the proposed new district to that because of the population being changed in the third ward. So that, just as a heads up to the third ward and fifth ward council people. Do you guys have that in those maps, so you could see that difference? Judge, did you, on these maps, do they have that in there?
As you probably have already informed them, I completed all of this today. Spent the day on it up here. All of the data you have was prepared by the Oneida County Planning Department with the complete assistance of their staff and Mr. Genovese, who is the commissioner. And he, the only thing I didn't have when I left him today was the sheet I just gave you that shows the breakdown of what happens with the proposed legislation I presented to you. I want to tell you two things. First, the proposed legislation is done in exactly the same form as the original legislation. I think it was in 2002, Dominic? Yeah, and I follow that. As far as the descriptions, that is something that Mr. Genovese and his staff worked on. And she mentioned the first district. He and I didn't discuss the first district except very briefly when he told me he tweaked the first district. And obviously, we've always known that the third and fifth were completely out of whack. And so the biggest emphasis in this was the third and the fifth. Now, in conclusion, this document that I have prepared for you, I got from the county planning, of course, and it's something I've been working on since the middle of last year because if you don't redistrict, which you were supposed to do 10 years ago, you face federal charges and state charges. So all I'm saying to you, I personally have no concern about how you do this. Some of the polling place numbers might be a little off. I think Ms. Testa may know about more about that than, because we discussed that today. Like, they have numbers like 5.2 and all that. I'm not sure that they're quite that accurate. But Mr. Genovese and I talked about trying to keep the boundaries so that polling places that existed would make it easier for the Department, Board of Elections, to continue their election procedure in the same manner without too much upset to them. All of this, I didn't go to the Board of Elections today, though, but I understand that council person tested it, but that's okay. And I, we're going to have to work with them, and they're going to have to work with us when it's all over. And all of that is not going to become important until you finally, as a council, decide what the six districts are going to look like. That's your job. And as you know, if you read the newspaper, redistricting is a hot item. It has to be done with a lot of cooperation. And I think of all the things that legislatures do, I've never seen more activity by the court system than there has been in this particular issue. So it's important for you to get together as a city body and do what you think is right within the limits of the political, the personal, and all the other considerations you have. At this point, I feel complete that I've done what I've said I was going to do for a year. I was going to present you with a redistricting document. What you do with the document now is up to the mayor and his office, the Corporation Counsel, their office, you council persons, and of course, with my assistance. And I'm sure that there are political leaders in the community who are also going to examine this rather closely because that's what they do. So I just want you to know that I have a completely neutral, non-involvement position here. I presented you with what I promised, a document. It's not, it probably is not perfect. It may not be the final document. But at least now, you have a document that I'm sure within the next three or four months, you should be able to adopt. And then that's over. And that only will take place when the 2005 election comes up. The people who run in that election in those six districts will run on whatever you have decided ultimately comprises that district. And if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. We have some other local laws, as you know, the local laws. You introduce them generally, as Councilwoman Testa said, because the law says, there are two methods there. You either lay it on the table immediately. Don't bother committee because laying on the table is what the statute says. So use that statute. You have a letter of necessity, I believe, I saw one from the mayor, which allows a local law to be passed by a two-thirds majority the first time it's introduced if it's an emergency situation. And so there's another alternative, which I take no position whatsoever. Unless anybody has any question about that. I think that, I think I said that I've heard that someone in the council said they were going to put it in committee and then was corrected by Councilwoman Testa. You lay it on the table for seven days. That's the law.
And the only other thing that I wanted to point out, which Judge Garamone stated as far as the legality purposes. So the reason why I actually went to the Board of Elections, it had nothing to really do with the maps, because whatever the council decides, I'm okay with. It doesn't affect me either way, was the fact that if we were to ever be brought to court, the third and fifth ward would be mandated in the change, the first ward would not because of that deviation being under that 5%. So just as a, just as a no, I wanted to add that in there.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to lay this on the table tonight?
You just have to fill in, there has to be amended on the floor.
The next proposal is a bail reform resolution. And I'm getting to it. No. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I don't. Here it is. No, it isn't.
I think the district map should be placed in there. So before the council lays it on the table, I think they need to make the determination of whether or not that they want to amend all three districts or they just want to amend two. So that's got to be clarified before it's laid on the table. So you might want to come up So you might want to come up with that decision before you move on to the next piece, to lay it on the table.
Okay, is there any discussion on the, on the way to do first, third, and fifth?
Yeah, I think we just go with the two, because you don't have to do the first ward, just leave it as it is. So, just go with the first two and that's it, three and five.
So I'll give, I actually have that map of just three and five. I'll pass it around, because it should be attached along with the district deviation for the redistricting component. I didn't make copies because I didn't know what Judge Garamone had, but I can make copies of these, because they should be attached to the actual local law, so people could see what streets are actually being amended. But if, that's only if we're sticking with three and five, because I didn't have the first ward done.
Those are the only wards that are, are the only districts that are changing?
So, no. So I just...
Three and five.
I'll reiterate, so three, five would be mandated by a court, if this were to ever go in front of anybody, that those districts had to be changed for the simple fact that...
There's not enough people.
I don't know what I did with that. Oh, I got too many pieces of paper in front of me. I don't know what I did with that other piece, hang on. So either way, the standard deviation of the third and fifth ward have, are mandated to change, the first ward's not. So that's what I'm saying. It's good, it's up to the council to make the determination if the first ward's going to be included in the, in the redistricting map. So before you lay it on the table, you have to make that determination. Otherwise, you're going to, if you make an amendment to the local law when it's laid on the table, it has to be relayed on the table for another seven days.
So let's just change to three and five.
So we're just going to go with three and five?
Yeah.
But I just, I'll ask a big little poll straw before I go waste my time again and then people change at the last minute.
Anybody have a problem with three and five?
I had already had a discussion with Judge Garamone about five and the fact that, about the population. So I kind of knew this was coming, I just didn't know what streets. So, you know, I'm going to talk to some of the people from my district and let them know, because I don't think they were aware of the streets that were going to be eliminated from my district, but I can take care of that, I think.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, okay.
I'm good. But I do have to talk to some of the residents, because they kept asking me when it was coming, so.
And we avoided it for...
Yeah.
We evaded the redistricting for 10 years.
Yeah.
You know, and this is a new concept. I don't, I don't...
It happened under, I mean, yeah, during Jerome McKinsey's time.
Yeah.
So, this does suck that you have to change your...
Is that in line with the, the new one, is that in line with the county legislature?
Almost a thousand percent, I believe, that it is. The only reason that it wouldn't be is because the sixth ward is different.
Right.
Because it, that, that...
No, I'm just talking the three and five change.
So, so the three and five change, I'm not 100% sure, just for the simple fact that the fourth, the fourth district, the sixth district, and the second district do not limit, on our original map, do not limit that. So they might be a street or two off compared to the county legislators.
Right, okay.
Because I know that the fourth ward, Jacquino's, represents, used to represent Danielle Son, Mohawk Street, that is no longer in the fourth ward of the county map, but it'll still stay in the fourth ward on the city map.
Same thing in the sixth ward.
So it's too hard for us to limit here as 100%.
I was just looking at the five, two.
By law, we have to do it. We have to do it. It's the law. I mean, we have to do it. End of story.
I think it's almost the same as county legislators, because when my wife was doing her, her signatures, some of the streets had actually been given to Tim Julian, so I think it's, I think it's pretty much the same, we're just getting it a little later.
Those might mimic it, but because we're not changing the fourth, the sixth, those will still stay our original district.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'd like to go on to this other resolution seeking change in the New York State bond reform. Councilmember Beatrice, would you like to speak on this?
Yes. I sent all you guys a copy three weeks ago. It's just, and we had our public safety meeting last week, and you heard Chief Williams basically request this stuff. If you look from 2019, when a lot of this changed, our crime rate and a lot of this stuff has gone up. I talked to Mayor Gleme, I actually talked to Assemblywoman Button Sean this afternoon, and this is just a tool for them to go, you know, to Albany with, you know, showing them the problems that we're having. So, I sponsored this, and I'm hoping that we can make this full council and go along with it from there. We all, I think we were all here for the public safety meeting. I handed it all out to you guys. Everybody's, everybody's read it. So whoever wants to get on it with me, I'd appreciate it. I'd look for everybody's support on it.
I had a question on that as well.
Yes.
One of the things that I actually, I was glad that we got to hear from the police. I think one of the components we are missing is the prosecutor's side of what the bail reform experience has been like. I know you mentioned you wanted to address raise the age in here as well. I called the district attorney's office and spoke with Nicholas Fletcher today, and he's a gun-involved violence elimination and community outreach person. And they're actually going to be meeting, Assemblywoman Mary Ann Button Sean set up a meeting with their office and the governor early next month, and to discuss raise the age. And I think whatever legislation the council passes should be in support, more specifically with the policy changes they're seeking, if the council's in agreement of that. So I didn't know if it would be in everybody's interest to put this in committee and have one more committee meeting, but actually hear from the district attorney's office. But, Joe, it's your legislation and...
No, I want to bring this out tonight. I've heard, I've talked to, previously, the DA. I've talked to a lot of people out there, and they are, basically, this is a tool they need. You heard, you heard our police chief, what he, you know, what he spoke of the other night. So, I'm going to, I'd like to put this out there tonight. Do I have the support from you guys?
If I can just finish on that, too. I do believe that there are changes that should be made with bail reform. At the same time, I think legislation that actually gives them the teeth to do something with it. If we're looking to actually make legislation to give them policy changes, then we should actually contribute that. But if it's just a political tactic, then I will be voting no on this. And one of the lines that stands out to me, that I think is problematic, is in the fifth paragraph at the end, it says, "Our police officers, court system, and law-abiding citizens now wear the handcuffs." This is the New York we have been given by officials who seem to have lost all sense of reality. Now, those officials who supposedly have lost all sense of reality are the ones you're asking to, to make these changes. And, I don't know, many elected officials who really look at that and want to listen and see that as just reaching out to each other and trying to make the changes people are seeking. So those, for these reasons, and not with, and with the lack of the actual policy focuses of what it is, I'll be voting no on this. You know, I've, we've heard that, yes, crime is up in Utica and throughout New York State. People do associate it with bail reform. The stats, though, across the country also show that crime is up. The chief said that last week at the last meeting. And not every state has bail reform. So, I think, like I said, there are policies that can be made and changed to improve, but it doesn't seem like that's the conversation we're having. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Mr. Burmester, may I have the floor, please?
Yes, your man.
Thank you. The only other thing, Joe, that I would suggest that you add, is I think it's important to add, I would suggest sending this legislation to every city in Oneida County. So maybe, you know, Rome, the other municipalities, so maybe their legislative body could possibly adopt something like this. And the only other thing that we discussed at the committee meeting is that I would add just an emphasis on raise the age. How that's, that's been a huge...
So, you want to amend something?
I'll make, I'll make an amendment on the floor, but as long as you're okay.
Okay.
And I'll put that amendment forward. So there would just be the two amendments. One on adding the other municipalities in Oneida County, and the other one would be the raise the age.
Okay. Do we have support on this?
Go ahead, Joe.
It's a resolution, so I mean...
So, my position, and we touched on it last Wednesday, bail reform did, did come up, and I'm in the camp of, I think revisions do need to be made, specifically from my perspective with regard to judicial discretion. You know, city court judges here, county court judges here are elected just the way that we all are. So, and I know, I understand revisions were made in 2022 with the direct aim of providing judge, well, the amendments in 2022 to provide judges with more discretion. But, you know, that's where I see the biggest possibility for change here. You know, that, that being said, the legislation as proposed, there are a few things I do wonder about and would like to discuss some of the language. For example, on the fourth whereas clause, young victims being injured and killed by other minors who are not subject to the criminal justice system, you know, taken literally, I don't think that's accurate. They are subject to the criminal justice system, and we had a, in the Proctor, on the Proctor grounds-related school shooting back last year, I believe that individual was a minor and was, was charged with murder. So, just specific areas with those certain sentences, I want to make sure, especially if we do send this out to other municipalities, that all of our ducks are in a row and everything is verified throughout, and work on that language, to make sure if we are using this as a template to send out to other, again, send out to other cities and whatnot, that we can look at this and trust that each sentence in here has been, been verified and reviewed.
Okay. Just speaking on that, if you, and maybe, police over here could speak up, just the other day, they stopped a car with four guns in the car, and I believe two of the youths, it was the second time they've had a gun in the car with them, that they've been arrested for it, sent back out to the street, and they're again with a gun. Am I correct?
Without having, so there was, there was a vehicle stopped two nights ago where several offender, you know, there were several guns that were seized, and there was, you know, several people in the car. There was, I think, you know, a bunch of people that were detained. I don't know exactly when it all, whenever, when all the dust settled, who exactly got charged, how many got charged. So, without having all the information, I just don't want to start throwing out things. But, it is correct that there was, you know, a vehicle stopped with a bunch of minors involved, juveniles, and there were some guns that were seized.
But there was two youths, according to the news, there was two youths, it was their second time that they were, had a gun, second charge.
Yeah, it was just released in January 2024.
And I, and I just, without having it right in front of me and without being able to verify it, I don't want to, I don't want to...
You could, Joe, just print out that attachment and attach it to the legislation.
Okay, that's fine.
Print out the release that the Utica Police Department put out.
Okay.
I don't think, I think the legislative intent is just to say that bail reform, raise the age, isn't, isn't cutting it.
Exactly.
And if you don't like the language, you can make that amendment on the floor to take that out. I think that that would be fair. And I think that the intent of maybe taking a word that you don't like out, if it means something figuratively and literally different than, than what your opinion is, I would make that suggestion. And I don't think anybody here would have a problem with striking a piece of language to, to hold this piece of legislation actually up, to be submitted, because I think the intent is to let everybody know that, you know...
To give our legislators tools.
We're not here to, we're not here to, you know, worry about people's feelings when kids are getting executed that are 16 years old.
Sure, and I do just want to reiterate, I am in favor of revisions to the bail reform law. I just want to make sure as a council, if we do pass something like this or similar, that we're just making sure everything's verified.
All this is, is to give our, our state officials some, some tools when they can go to Albany to try to help us out here, because obviously, we all know it's a major problem. So, appreciate that. So I have no problem with if you want to amend something.
I don't know in the legislation, but I know that a lot of police chiefs and from Oneida County and other counties have been meeting, or they met when this first came out, and they were talking about how they didn't like it and what they could do. And I'm just wondering, where, I found out where it's going to go with the suggestion from Councilwoman Testa, but I'm wondering, if we do send this in, is it going to do any good? Because I think a lot of this has been addressed by our state officials, Mary Ann Button Sean, Senator Griffo, and other people, and also our police chiefs and wherever else in the state have been meeting for a very long time to, to address what I call the catch and release program that we have in this state. So I'm wondering, you know, I don't mind sending it to the Senate if it could help, but we have been doing this and talking about this for a long time, and I'm wondering why, how it's going to affect anything if we do pass the legislation that's under there. And I think Joe did a good job, Councilman Beatrice did an excellent job with legislation, but I do wonder if it's going to do any good. And I was upset, just like everybody else, when I heard that, about the shooting, that people were released. And he already had to sign the DACA for tonight, so it's kind of interesting. Thank you.
And this is just to kind of go back to what you're saying. So, I, I think that Joe's legislation, I think, you know, when Joe speaks, he speaks...
From his heart.
Personally. I mean, I don't know if sometimes it's out of his heart or mind or some other places, but besides that, there is another piece of legislation that yourself, Councilman, Councilperson Ayalo, Councilman Burmester, and Councilman LaMedico are also sponsoring, that does just that same thing in talking within about Medicaid. So, if you think that that intent of that legislation is going to be helpful, I think that the same piece of legislation, you know, requesting it to those same officials could also do that, do that same thing.
Actually, I looked at the legislation on the Medicaid, and I don't even think they're similar and have the same purpose.
No, 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 and I'm, I'm just saying, and I was going to actually make an amendment on the bottom of that, to that legislation.
I thought you were comparing them as...
No, I was just saying, like, to send it, to send it to the same people with that intent that this is something that this legislative body supports.
I still feel that that's something entirely different than what we're talking about here.
And that's, that's your opinion, I'm just saying, with the intent of sending it out to those people is what, what I meant, not specifically the same.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
So, like I said before, I know there's been other council members who've talked to Mary Ann Button Sean, and they know how she feels. She personally called me today to thank me for putting this in. And so, this, all I'm trying to do here is to give our state representatives some tools to go to Albany with. Our mayor, and other, you know, obviously, he's not a state representative, but he's got a say in this, and it's just something we need to do, to open their eyes, to see what's going on down there. That's, that's what I tried to do there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it seems like most of us agree, we're just going to change the wording a little bit and get it in. Right? Change the wording.
So take the wording before.
Yes, let it write it down.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, one last part I want to add. I still want to reiterate and just make my stance that if we're going to do something like this, I think the best justice you can do for the community is to actually apply policy changes that we're seeking. Bail reform is complex and big, and it's actually quite different than just also raise the age. I know we all disagree, I guess there's a lot of people in here who want to lump them together, but if you, there's also, I think, the component that should be discussed that isn't often, is that bail reform does help people in ways. There are people, you know, they've, you're innocent until proven guilty. And there's been studies of just the percentages, high percentages of people who, who are arrested, and then they're once convicted, that you don't see them actually have to be incarcerated. Those are people who did not have to go to jail, who means that they get to keep their jobs, they get to be with their families, they don't get their kids taken away. It is meant to really serve a purpose of helping communities and to stand by, be innocent until proven guilty. Of course, we've seen the execution of some, some issues with, I guess, the rearrest, and there have been complications of, I think a lot of people want, you know, immediate, immediate consequences for people, even though we don't know that, where they stand on some of these arrests. Some of them we do, and we know where it's going to, where it's going to turn out. But, there's a lot more to this. Another thing I just kind of want to put on the record, I thought it was interesting, I was talking with people from the jails, and I wanted to know their perspective of bail reform. And he said that they actually see about 200 people less because of bail reform. And as a result, he also made a point that without it, they would not be able to keep up with the demand. They're already... They're already short-staffed. I thought it was a really interesting perspective. And then also, since bail reform, they're seeing less actually infighting and crimes in the jails. Because before, you would get people in on petty larceny or nonviolent crimes and they would actually cause more havoc in the jail. So, just, I'm not all just on the pro side of it, but I think these are pieces of the conversation that have been missing. And just wanted them on the record and help educate people along the way. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Well, let me go on to the next piece of legislation, which is a no parking at all signs, submitted by Councilperson Ayo.
I'm all set with this.
You're all set with this?
No. Um, so, Mr. Cutelli passed away last week, on January twenty-first, at the age of ninety-seven. His family had a private memorial for him. And I just put together a proclamation for the family so that they had it at the funeral for him. Lou was a former councilperson and actually, I got to know him through, through the recent years because of the term limit extension. And he was, he was a true proponent to try and get the term limit extension under the Palmieri administration, not passed by the council and on the ballot and tried to get it reversed. And through that time, I actually got very close with him and his, his family. So, I, I gave that to him, so I just, if we could pass that tonight and maybe just a little moment of silence in honor. Yeah.
Full council? He did twelve years, this guy.
Before term limit.
Thank you. Proposition order number four, the ordinance authorizing agent with the county of Oneida for temporary purchasing services. I did have a, I'll speak with the mayor today and if Mike can.
Yeah, so, we currently do not have a purchasing department within the city of Utica. To relieve that until, as we post for a test, we started discussion about a agreement with Oneida County for them, for our purchasing to go through them. Right now, we're looking at a six-month temporary that will allow us to, one, learn that process. Also, as we hire somebody to be within, within the city, then they could also provide training and stuff as well. So, it's going to be at no cost. We're not going to be paying the county anything to do that other than obviously paying the bills for the stuff that we purchase. So, it's really from an administrative standpoint, a no-brainer until we're able to put together our own purchasing department.
And this is, this, this, I'm sorry, may I have the floor, please? I apologize.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is something that wasn't, is it, no, the county actually, the city actually used to work with the county all the time when they had their eBay purchasing department. And we used to sell plenty of items through the eBay department, which was also the purchasing department. And it used to bring in, you know, quite a bit of money to the city to offset some of those costs. So, to utilize this as a, as a free technique and it's not only a free technique, but it's also a shared service that the city, that the city could utilize to their advantage, working with the county. And I think that in the next piece that you'll actually see is the, the sale and dispens of multiple items through the DPW Police Department, City Hall. A lot of those, through this agreement, the majority of those things, we used to go through the county and the county would actually sell them for us and give us back that money. And we got away from it for some reason and the police department went and used to, do you remember with the police department, the, the sale department, the, the online agency that they used to use to, to, to sell obsolete items?
I don't specifically. I do know that we did. We were hooked up with some type of, some type of agency that we would sell things online through some type of auction. Once they, so once, once the case that they were involved with came to fruition and the court had expunged of whatever court proceeding was associated, then they would go to auction. And I don't know what happened to the proceeds and all that stuff.
Well, the proceeds actually went into the general fund, but back to, back to their point, I couldn't remember what the company actually was. But they used to charge us like a fifty percent fee, so we would basically get nothing out of those sales. So, I think that the police department ended up getting away from that. So, this, this, and I don't know if the purchasing department is in the process of, or if they have the manpower to sell some of our items. Is that something that was part of this agreement?
It, it wasn't, but they are open to anything else. And then just, we're, we are also going to maintain a liaison through the city of Utica to be the go-between. And just, any purchases will have to be also through the mayor.
And I'll tell you another component of why this, why this piece of legislation actually is important and what we used to do prior. And again, I don't know why we got away from the county component, but like, say, we, we buy toilet paper. We piggyback off the county's purchase of toilet paper to kind of make that cost a little more efficient for both the county and the city because we're purchasing in bulk. That goes for a number of things, sand sanitizer, things like that. So, if the county goes out for purchase for some of those things, we piggyback on their contract and they could possibly piggyback on other, other contracts, depending on whether or not that they have an agreement. So, this is just more than just them acting as a purchasing agent for us. It's actually a cost-effective way for us to do business in utilizing their services as a shared service. So, there's a lot more than just them purchasing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to bring this out tonight. Do we have full council? If not, we can place it in committee? Is that okay?
Note that the sooner it's passed for us than Oneida County, the board of legislators, it's passed.
Okay. Thank you.
The only question that I missed was, what was the, did, did, what was the temp, what? I can't speak tonight. What was the agreement till? Was there a time component of the temporary?
It was six months.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that, if you approved that at the county differently.
Something that, if it's working well and it's a benefit, continues to be a benefit.
Then we can do it like twenty years, like the Utica Zoo, stuff like that?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, our fifth one is calling for a public area on a sale of fourteen nineteen Lincoln Ave. Of course, that's my area. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. The next one is the, the approval of approving the destination of the, the property for, I'd like to place it in committee? Number six.
Lincoln Ave.
Oh.
Yeah.
Number seven is from Councilman, Councilmember Ayo, no parking at all times. Councilman Ayo.
I think this one's supposed to technically be under Councilman Venice Urban. And, but either way, I'm all set with it, if you are Venice.
Yeah, that's good.
You good with it?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, surplus property.
Getting rid of that podium.
So, just to be clear, I don't know that necessarily.
Oh, okay, because I was like, if we're going to get rid of this or throw it out, I, I want to be a garbage picker for my classroom.
Yes, there's a number of items there that need to be sorted through. It was just easier because of the amount of items that have been collected.
You can purchase it through county.
I'm going to purchase it through the county department. Perfect. I need a new chair for my classroom too.
So, all these transactions are going to be going through the county once we approve this?
Yeah.
So, the items that are shown in the photos will be disposed of. Either they will be determined as garbage and disposed of that way, sold, however we deem it appropriate, it'll be going through that way. I don't know how we're currently doing that. I think we do some stuff on Facebook Marketplace. I'm not exactly sure how we're authorizing the disposal of some items. Uh, it'll be a combination of, well, there's a number of different things. The stuff in the city hall garage will probably be the engineering department, engineering department to determine what is to determine what we're going to do with it. I think Dave already has a plan for the Bobcat. And then as far as you can see, they'll follow the regular course if they do for, for those vehicles.
Thank you. The next piece is an ordinance prohibiting the public consumption of cannabis. Sponsored by myself and Councilman Williamson. Councilman Williamson, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, talking to the mayor earlier, his, his concern was, you know, you know, public intoxication as well as, you know, smoking weed out in, you know, in front of a restaurant. And, you know, you got privacy citizens who don't do that and they don't want to smell it. So, it only makes sense that, you know, we got to get in front of this as we start expanding the marijuana business in New York State.
If I can speak on that too when you're finished.
Thank you.
So, I, I met with OCM, Office of Cannabis Management. They came to Utica, let's see, last year. They had a great presentation, learned so much about not just the dispensaries, but how people are growing it, what's legal, what's not. And I highly recommend it. I actually reached out to them to see if they were available. I'd love, if we could put this in committee, to have a committee meeting where they come out and provide a presentation to the council as well of what to expect also long-term. And I'm going to keep waiting to hear back from them unless anybody else has any ideas to learn more.
Anybody else?
Can I?
Yeah. Councilman Beaches?
So, in, in response to what Katie's saying, I don't believe, I believe they could come and tell us everything proactive. I think the biggest issue here is no matter what they say, when I'm, if I'm at Utica Coffee with my daughter or grandchild to be soon, or any kids, I, I don't believe that I want to see anybody smoking pot out in front of the location. I think that's, that's basically where we're going. So, obviously, we got this, to bring this out, we have to be unanimous. So, if we have to put it in committee, that's fine. But I think that's the, the intent is, I don't want to say a safety issue, but a public nuisance issue. And so.
Thank you.
So, just to give some, some background to the, the legislation, this is separate from, I know the council just passed the moratorium, this is separate from obviously issues relating to zoning, licensing through New York State and where the dispensaries can be located and/or consumption locations can be located. The purpose of this is specifically to address public inebriation, much like with alcohol and issues we have with open containers. It's basically to treat cannabis and put it in the same category. We have currently legislation that prohibits smoking of any kind within various public places, including public parks. And, I mean, that's the big one. But this would specifically address all public places as listed in the, enlisted in the ordinance, mainly to address not only effects of the smoke, but the other issues that come about with people who are inebriated in public. So, I think that's the mayor's concern and the administration's concern, is that now that it is legal, we have a lot of things to be addressing going forward and I think we're just trying to get ahead of it.
Thank you.
The only other question that I have is, we passed no smoking in parks as a body a while back. And I was just curious to know what difference that this is compared to the legislation that was already passed.
Yep, so that didn't include sidewalks, parking areas, other areas. The, that legislation, I think it said within, it did say public parks, it did say schools. I think it did say transportation facilities and within twenty-five feet of a city-owned building. But it did not include, you know, general areas. It doesn't include outdoor patios and restaurants. So, this is a little bit more broad as to the definition of a public place.
So, I guess, so like, for example, let's say you're in front of a bar, right? You could smoke a cigarette in front of a bar.
Correct.
So, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. So, it says the burning of a lighted cigar, cigarette pipe, or any other matter or substance which contains cannabis. So, this is strictly cannabis?
Correct.
So, we don't want to help people that smoke cigarettes? No, I'm just kidding. All right, so that, that was, I guess, was just my, just my curiosity out of the difference between what the original, because I know, like.
So, I think, so I think the mayor's position on this, or the administration's position, is we all are aware that smoking has harmful effects on individuals and secondhand smoke. But I think his purpose is to look at it more in the context of open containers and people using it out in public. You know, you're not allowed to have an open container in public, you're not allowed to drink while you drive. We're trying to treat that similarly. You're not allowed to smoke cannabis while you drive. So, we're trying to distinguish, although it is, you know, you typically do smoke marijuana, but you can use, use it in other ways. But I think that is the purpose of this, is to try to treat it as public inebriation essentially, less than the effects of smoking per se.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess my point is, is that if somebody's smoking marijuana outside a bar, I mean, I can't have the expectation that our police department's going to go up to somebody and find somebody for doing that. So, I mean, I, I guess that's, that's kind of just my, if, if. There was any type of discretion, I mean, obviously, they would use it if they needed to, if, if somebody was out of line or out of order. But I don't see the difference if, especially if it's legal to some extent. If somebody wants to smoke a cigarette or cannabis outside of a bar, that it's, they're allowed to drink, they're not allowed to smoke. I guess that's all I'm saying, is that if we just use this star discretion. Like, no smoking in parks, I agree one hundred and ten percent. No smoking during youth events, I agree one hundred and ten percent. I mean, that's, I think, common knowledge. Unfortunately, some people don't follow it. But I was just, I was just curious to know if that was the, that was the extent. And this obviously has nothing to do with cannabis being made or bought or purchased or anything like that. So, that's a whole separate discussion, I think, that the other councilperson brought up.
There has been several business owners that have also talked about smoking marijuana outside of their places, how the smell travels and stuff like that. So, that has been a big one. And drawing the line in the distinction that there is a difference between smoking a cigarette and.
I think they're both, I think they both smell. So, if, I mean, if you're out to dinner, you don't want to smell cannabis or cigarettes.
And we have, and, and the state has done a lot to eradicate tobacco smoking and that. And that as well, it shouldn't be within a certain distance from a, a building and stuff like that.
It just, it's obviously, if this, this legislation is, if the need be, you have the intent to utilize it to what you're, what you needed to utilize it for. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
And I will say, when it comes to parks and stuff, it is.
Sure, and I want all the people that voted no on my no smoking legislation to vote no on this too.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Just a question for Corporation Council. I see portions of the penal law cited here. Is there a comparable state law that addresses what's being proposed in this ordinance that your, that Corporation Council's aware of?
There is not. There is, the sections of the penal law just define cannabis and address smoking. There is legislation that, in New York State, that addresses smoking cannabis in the general sense of smoking. The only thing I'm aware of is there is, I believe, some legislation pending in the Senate to address public consumption. I don't know where that has gone. I don't know, I think it said it's general public consumption, not just smoking.
And I assume there's statutes that address driving. Well.
Yes, uh, this does not include, it is illegal to drive under the influence, so.
Thank you.
And if I can just address, right now, it is illegal to smoke, I believe it's twenty feet outside of the entrance of any facility. I enact it and push it all the time because I can smell the smoke from cigarettes coming into my coffee shop. into my coffee shop. And I see the points of, people say that it's, well, I don't actually. Some people say that cigarettes and cannabis are different. The only differences I really see is one is a plant, the other one, the secondhand smoke. You are breathing in chemicals and toxins. People are concerned, I believe, about a contact high perhaps with cannabis. But in these, when you're outside at these distances, that ventilation, that's, I don't know what the studies are, but I think that one's pretty unlikely in those one.
I just, I just want to make it clear. We are addressing it in the smoking form, probably because that's the most practical. Again, I think the comparison should not be with smoking and smoking cigarettes, more of if you're outside drinking alcohol. There are other effects of, on children, of seeing people drink, but we not want, you know, and the nuisances associated with public intoxication. I think that is the comparison, less so than the smoking component. But it's very hard to-
If I can address that, too, I think there's a lot of, there's part of this, though, that there are stigmas around cannabis, and I'm not saying that's the intention of the administration. But there are some people who could support this in the sense of having those stigmas. One of the lines here, it says, the section, okay, allow it to be finding of the common council that cannabis use and smoke is disruptive and harmful to non-cannabis users and contributes to the creation of nuisances, including but not limited to public intoxication, littering, and ruckus or other disorderly behavior. Honestly, I don't know how many people have, even if people smoke to the point of high, they have seemed to be some of the chillest people that I've experienced. I do have plenty of drunk people walking around downtown. They are inebriated, and that's not illegal. I don't see the comparison. I'm not for this. And that's also why I want OCM to come in and just talk more on that. But I'll, I think that was it. And I agree, though, if it's about smoking, and if it was that, I understand your point, Stephanie, that it's not, but if it's about smoking, then it should apply to all cigarettes. And also, a reminder, this, the city will be receiving 4% of sales tax on all marijuana sales. That's fantastic to prohibit that. I don't know what that does for us financially, and also, it does hurt small businesses. So, that's just where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Mr. Berman, or Councilperson Bermanster, I hate to interrupt, but this is why we should have a separate committee meeting, when we have 27 pieces of legislation on the docket, because we're already five minutes past our regular council meeting. And I know that there's other things on here. Well, I know, but, I mean, we're already five minutes past, so I think that we should- Right, but we should have had a 5:00 committee meeting, knowing what was on the agenda, so that we're not five minutes past the regular start of the council meeting. So, that's all I'm going to say, is that we need to be a little more aware that this, we're five minutes past time. So, we've just got to speed it up a little bit, that we're-
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're going to put this in committee tonight. Thank you. The next piece is the ordinance amending section 2-1253-6A, resident dwelling registration fees of the Utica codes of order. This fee hasn't been increased in quite a few years, and, you know, just like everything else, everything goes up. The fee is comparable. Anybody have a question?
So, I'll just briefly comment, and if the chief has anything to add, I'll let him do so. As mentioned, we haven't increased the fees in at least 13, 14 years now. And I know the cost associated with implementing the program is increasing. So, that's why we're looking to make this change. And then, just in respect to the second piece, with the fees associated with re-inspections or failing to appear, we have had those issues, and they're becoming frequent, which is the increase for those, to give some people to incentive to actually-
Yeah, either, so, obviously, we tried for voluntary compliance on codes issues. We find ourselves returning to properties multiple times, sometimes six to eight times, and still don't get compliance. So, the goal is to just try to increase some of that compliance by possibly increasing the fees for either not showing up for the inspections, or for failure to comply in the long-term, and I'm not making the corrections that are needed.
Thank you.
I just have two, I just have one question, and this is on, I'm sorry, am I wasting somebody's time? Well, somebody was huffing and puffing. The one question that I have is on section 2-12-55A, is it says, any and all subsequent re-inspections, so this is for the first two inspections, it says $40 per re-inspection. Then it goes down to failure to appear within 15 minutes. It says $40 per unit. So, if a person has 20 units and they failed to show up, it's $40 per unit, or is it a $40 flat fee?
That was cut and pasted directly from the legislation.
So, I think that that just needs to be clarified, because I think that, and the other, you know, the other thing, and I don't remember when this legislation was originally passed, obviously, when the ROP inspections were implemented. But this was just something that I was going over. It says cancellation of a scheduled inspection less than 24 hours before scheduled inspection. So, that's a late cancellation, results in a $20 per unit. So, the second cancellation is more than the first, less than the first cancellation, or the first cancellation is more than the second cancellation? And then it says, second cancellation results in a $20 per unit. So, don't you think that the second one should be more of a penalty than scheduling the first one? So, that's all I'm going to, that's all I'm going to say, is obviously, per unit needs to be eliminated. So, if you want to do $40 per inspection, and then the only other recommendation is that if they do more than a second cancellation, I would double that to $80 per inspection. Does that make sense? Because if they do it the first time, you're charging them less than what they do the second time.
So, I think, so I don't know without discussing it with the chief. But, I mean, that's, we did not change that component. So, if we want to have it-
I just think it needs to read a little better. I mean, anybody can interpret that different. So, I would say, I would say maybe $40 per inspection, or per dwelling.
Okay, so, we would have to resubmit?
You don't have to resubmit. If everybody's okay with this, just, I'm just saying, it just needs to make it amended to have it, to have it read a little better, in my opinion, than what it states in the paper. So, this one, these are fine. These fees are okay. I mean, those just, those obviously go in with it. The only thing, the only thing that I'm saying is that I would have to make an amendment of $40 per unit, and they would have to say $40 per dwelling occupancy. Okay? And then the other one would be less than 24 hours, so the fee of 20, I would increase that to, I would say 60. And then the other one, more than once thereafter, a no-show, second cancellation would be 60 also, so that it's more than their first cancellation. Does that make sense? Yeah? Stephanie?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you want to change the-
No, I could do, I can make those amendments. But I'm just saying, like, if somebody cancels more than once, their penalty should be more than their first time that they failed to show up. Like, so, so, yeah, so it's on, it's on proposed ordinance number 11. It should say $40 per re-inspection thereafter, which should, so that's fine. And then, failure to appear within 15 minutes, so section two should say $40 per dwelling, or per dwelling occupancy unit. What do you call an entire structure? You don't just call it a unit, right?
No, a unit would be a-
Per one, right? So, what do you call an entire structure? A dwelling occupancy?
Would it be per inspection, or per dwelling?
So, this is just for, this is just for an inspection no-show?
I mean, if we say per inspection.
So, so, I'm, this-
As opposed to per unit?
So, this reads if you show up per, okay? These are your, these are your fees if you show up per. These are your no-show show-ups.
So, I, so I don't know, and I'm just doing this on the fly, because this does say unit. I believe when fire goes in, they don't always have to inspect all of the units.
Correct, because there are going to be times when we're doing re-inspects only, sure.
That's 100% fine, but what I'm saying is that if the-
So, the legislation says per unit. So, he wants it to, it needs to stay per unit.
Right, so say one person doesn't show up, and they've got three units that are in that inspection. You're charging them $40 for the first unit, second unit, and third unit?
If someone doesn't show up for-
Because you, sometimes you inspect more than one unit, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, does that make sense? So, you don't want to charge them per unit. Either way, what we're saying is still stays the same, because that person is only going to be charged for that one unit that they didn't show up for, whether there are three different units all in one building. You're not going to charge somebody 40, 80, $120 for not showing up for three different, showing, say they're 15 minutes late.
If it's a three-family house, are you charging them all three units, or just the one unit?
I think that-
Failure to appear? So, if we go, what I was looking for is just to increase the no-show fee. So, right now, if we show up, and the person isn't there to let us sit, there's a $20 fee associated.
Just one?
Yeah.
Not for all three units?
Not for all, not for all, it's just for the dwelling.
I agree with, I agree with Councilman Beattar's suggestion of just, can't we just call it inspection? Because that's what the action is.
No, because there's, because they, and the reason why is that they schedule multiple inspections. So, like, say I'm Sam Testa, I own-
But for that scheduled inspection, then?
Right, but those, these are for no-shows. So, these inspections, they pay per flat rate. So, say they've got up to six units, right? They pay a flat rate of $65, plus 35 per unit. So, those fees are already scheduled into there, okay? Those are two separate pieces of legislation. This is actually for a no-show. So, if they have three rental units and they already showed up, then that's the fee that they pay. This is for them not paying, this is for them not showing. I don't care, you want to charge somebody $120 for not showing up for those three. That's all I'm saying, is that you do it per dwelling occupancy, and then change the second inspection more than what it is.
Yeah, all right, so this was the recommendation, you know, this is what we were looking to do, and you guys legislate however you want to do it.
Well, I mean, we really need money for any budget. And I, this legislation was fine. It's, I'm not, I know it wasn't- And that's why we should have a committee meeting prior.
This, exactly why, we should have taken this and put it in committee, so next time we can discuss it.
Right, but we usually, if you-
This has nothing to do with the committee.
No, it does, because we can't schedule a committee meeting on legislation until we actually have a council meeting. So, we can't even discuss this prior to it being introduced, Jack? I don't care, I will talk for another four.
We're going to place this in committee, and-
But you can't discuss the way your rules of order are written, legislation, until you have a committee meeting.
You put it in the committee, and then you got legislation to discuss.
Right, but you can't discuss it until you actually put it in committee, Jack. Those are your rules.
Okay, okay, okay. We're going to, we're going to put this in committee. Thank you. The next piece is a placement of honorary sign from Councilman Testa. Would you like to?
I can talk again? Tough frig. It's not my, this is nobody's fault, I'm just saying that these things need to be discussed. What was, what were you asking me?
We're on, we're on the placement of an honorary street sign, number 12, for its custom for the common council of the city of Utica.
Oh, that's, that's just a simple little piece. It's just renaming a little portion of Sunset Ave in honor of Camper, which is also known as Gary Campbell, who runs the establishment on Sunset Ave. And there's a little section of that Sunset Ave, it doesn't have any addresses, there's nothing attached to it, it's just a little portion of Tennessee Street, or Sunset Ave.
Yep.
That is it.
All the signs are made?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is a resolution authorizing the adjustment to the solid white service charge. Pursuant to section 1 subdivision 12 of local law number 1 of 1990, a person may appeal a determination made regarding the levy of social waste service charge. I don't know where this came from. Whereas the local law further provides that there were an applicant involved's request for- What is it? Okay. It's just a resolution. If it doesn't have full counsel, we can place it in committee. If we can vote on it tonight, we can take it and- Okay, number, number 14, this is sponsored by ALO, myself, Urban in Monaco. It's for the New York State Medicaid Equality Now.
I can speak on it. This is just a request, you know, the state's working on their state budget, and while we have the opportunity, asking them to cover 50% of Medicaid expenses. So, I think that would push it up about 20 to 30%, and help people on lower income and seniors. Just a resolution.
If you'd like to place it in committee, because it doesn't have your support tonight, we can do that, Councilman Beatrice, if, yeah, we'll place it- Okay, we'll place it in committee, and we'll discuss it at the next committee meeting. And the final piece is a resolution for a candidate for the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Board, Water Board, Dennis Bova?
Yes.
I invited Pat Besser, I thought we could have had a little bit of time to discuss. I think he left. He's no longer here. He's the head of the Mohawk Valley Water Authority. But I think it's nice to come in, let us, to give him, give us an update, let us know what capital improvement projects the water authority is going for, what they have, how the appointments are going, whose appointment's up, and just kind of give us a rundown of what's going on for that. And I had asked if Mr. Bova could just send a letter of intent. Did he send that? No, I mean, it should be a formality, that he sends us a letter and lets us know that he wants to be reappointed before he's, before he's appointed.
Well, we can place this in committee and wait for the letter. Very good. Very good.
I have, I know we're over time. I have one thing for, Stephanie, would you be able to speak on the URA property for MMRI that we're not voting on tonight? Do you have any information on, what was it, the agreement you guys are waiting to postpone, or can you speak on that?
So, my understanding that the public hearing is scheduled for tonight, we have not negotiated our agreement yet. We are working on that. So, it's up to the council's discretion. I know the last council meeting, there was some hesitation, because you didn't exactly know what the terms would be. I have since reached out to their attorney to try to see what we can work out, to get clarification on those terms, but I don't have that at this time. People that'll be aware of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to talk to the mayor today, and he expressed the same thing. There was terms and whatnot, and he asked us to just leave it in committee, and we'll take it from there. Any other questions before I close? I'd like to make a motion to close. Thank you. We've got five minutes?
Five minutes, we're starting.
First person is Eugene.
Yes. Good evening, Councilor.
Good evening.
My name is Eugene.
Yeah, Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3-244 Public Comment Period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
You have three minutes, Eugene.
Thank you very much. Dr. Clark, I wanted to comment on the agendas because the people are out there. Who would like to have a hard copy agenda during the meeting as they're discussing these items? Because the board up here is not satisfied. We are old people, we can't see it that far. So the hard copy, I think, is the best solution to it. Because you want, is imperative, that community is involved in the process. Only way we're going to be involved with the process, we have to have the information in front of us. And my second concern was during the meeting tonight regarding bail reform. I don't want bail reform to become a political football. Our concern, your concern here should be preventive, stopping, because I don't know if you looked at your stats. You don't have good stats here when it comes to failing our children. This is what you need to be focusing on. How many juvenile offenses? You know, how many shootings there were? This is your focus. This is what you can control. So don't use the reform bill as a political football, because it's already been used as a political football. Your job is resolve issues in your district, in this city. Let's get that done. You have enough work to do, do getting that done. We don't have to worry about the state level, let's do the city level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eugene. Jared Jeff? Tough? Jared Tough?
Tough.
Sorry, Jared.
That's all right.
Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3-244 Public Comment Period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I usually talk, come up here and I talk about the gentrification and displacement of my community and the white supremacy in the city that is always ignored, but I'm not going to talk about that tonight. Tonight I want to talk about the Public Safety Advisory Board that you guys have put together under the radar, right before our eyes. It's been there for like two years. I just want to say that I don't feel that this committee and the mayor and different organizations should pick the board. The board should come from the community. You know, we've had a lot of trouble. No one's perfect. None of you are angels or gods, so we all make mistakes. You know, I've had issues with the police in the past. One time, back in early 2005, around there, I was driving past the hospital. Judge Dwyer's brother was leaving the hospital and he ran into me and a couple of family members in the car. I get the report the next week and it had down that I hit him and all this stuff. And I went back to the police station to get this cleared up and the officer wasn't even an officer no more. He was an investigator that quick. And the same thing with Noonan. Noonan was in professional standards for a while. And every time there was an issue, you know, he never helped. He'd just get the form back that nothing's found, nothing's found, and now he's like second in command. So it shows me that you are being promoted for doing bad things. And that's the same thing with this board. It seems like the board was picked out of people that was known to, you know, the mayor and, you know, to me, he's corrupt and, you know, the former mayor, not Mike, but, you know, and it seems like this committee picked them and they're friends. And, you know, Jim Winston in the early 90s, he was, he's a black officer that's retired that was abusing his own race and he's on the board. We don't want him on there. And, you know, so we want this board, I've been in touch-
Jared, no disparaging.
Oh, well, I said what I said. But we don't want that, him on the board and I've been in touch with the Attorney General's office and we just want this board to be picked more from the public, not from you guys. So we could have the correct checks and balance going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Vincent. Council has provided you a copy of Section 3-244 Public Comment Period. Are you in agreement?
Yes, I am.
State your name, please.
My name is Ron Vincent. I just happened to notice this sign that says Utica starts with you. Last 12 years, I always thought it said Utica starts with me. On the way into the meeting tonight, I was listening to something on the radio and it was like a prelude to the news channel that was coming up. They said they talked to somebody in the city and they said it's possible with the way things are going that we might have a tax increase of anywhere from 15% to 17%. I sure hope that's wrong. I hope they got the wrong information, made the wrong statement or whatever. But a few years ago, I was at a common council meeting, somebody brought up an idea of doing something different with the property taxes in the city of Utica. It's been noted that it's about 40% of the property in the city of Utica is tax exempt. That means 60% of the people in the city of Utica that own homes and property pay all the taxes in the city of Utica. And they brought up the idea at a common council meeting about charging a curb charge or a curb tax based on the frontage of your property on the city maps instead of charging you the way they charge you now somehow. And I was really opposed to the idea. I didn't think it was a great idea. But I realize in the last 12 years, our taxes haven't gone up 1%, half a percent or anything. And now all of a sudden, something hit the fan, which I won't say what, and the city's got to come up with some money. And I can understand it. I can't understand why for 12 years it never went up any. You know, a half a percent here, a percent there, maybe even a percent and a half. It wouldn't hurt the taxpayers. We could have gotten used to it. But you keep putting it off and putting it off and putting it off and now this brand-new administration is left with a bucket of something and they got to figure out a way to do it. If we charge curb tax, maybe all these nonprofit charity organizations downtown, all these so-called businesses downtown that have pilot programs, maybe they could start paying their fair share. Just imagine if you had to pay all the property tax on a curb that runs all along Columbia Street in Lafayette like this hospital over here.
Ryan, you got to finish up, please.
Might bring our taxes down.
You got to finish up.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Marie. Manicarachir.
Hello. I know everybody's behind, so I want to try and go really fast.
No, take your time. Three minutes. Common Council has provided you a copy of the public comment period. Are you in agreement?
I am.
Please state your name.
My name is Marie McNamich.
Thank you, Marie.
I'm here today to talk about the issue of the median on Dunham Road up in South Utica.
Yes.
I live in South Utica, but not in that immediate area, so there's that. But my comments are based on some of the discussions that I've heard at prior council meetings. All right, I'll scream then. My comments are going to be based on some of the things I've heard at prior council meetings. First is the issue of safety. I heard a couple of times that people were particularly interested in the safety of children and the proximity of this median to Jones School. That got raised a couple of times. Now, I'm sure all of the council people are concerned about that, particularly the council people at large, because your charge is the entire city, not a particular ward. Therefore, I'd like to point out that a very similar median exists, though it does have a cut for a walkway, on Park Avenue, just down from the traffic roundabout and about a block up from the DeSales Center where kids are all the time for programming. I suspect that the DeSales Center is closer to that median than Jones School is to the ones in South Utica. So there's also many kids that live around Park Avenue. So one of the council people mentioned that construction of the South Utica median created a possible liability for the city. If so, then that liability exists equally for the median on Park Avenue and for any other median anywhere near a facility serving kids. Therefore, I would like to suggest that if safety is your real issue here, you might want to inventory all of the medians nearest schools or other child facilities and make sure that they are safe. Correct? Right? Okay. So I'm assuming that, you know, alternatively, if safety's not the issue, there's something else going on. The second issue is a suggestion for the need for some kind of traffic study. I read the documentation from the engineering firm that designed the traffic control. That essentially is the traffic study. They went through all the physics of the situation, they outlined two possible options based on all of the stuff that they know as engineers, not laypeople, and said this was the least disruptive option for the neighborhood. So and in this matter, expertise counts for a lot. It doesn't matter what I think about the safety design or you think about the safety design, because unless you can whip out your slide rule and figure out the turning radius of a bus or how much this car going 30 miles around this curve will whip off, it's boom. Those are things, together with proper traffic controls and signage, that an engineer uses to design a safe intersection. That is different from people having complaints based on the fact that something is new and different and changing and maybe not liked initially. We've gone through that before with the traffic roundabouts. I'm sure when that went in on Park Avenue, everyone's like, oh my God, roundabouts, we can't handle it, but people got used to it. That's, and I'm not saying you shouldn't track accidents to see whether they get better or worse. That is a thing. You should collect that data. But I respectfully ask the council to keep these two issues, safety and public opinion, separate and the engineering issues, because none of us in this room are qualified to design or redesign that intersection. You really need a traffic engineer to do that. All right? All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Oh, and here's a picture of the Park Avenue one, if you want to see it just in case, so.
There are no common council guest speakers. Communication from the mayor, no. Report of city officers. Fire Chief Angersall?
No report tonight.
Captain Holt?
No, sir.
Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Sokolowski. Chief Gentile?
You didn't listen to me. I'm good.
You're good. Brian Thomas, Urban Renault?
Nothing to report.
Stephanie DiGiorgio, Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Report of city officers, no. Petitions, remotives, and appeals. Katie Ila, first ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I already spoke a lot tonight, especially when it came to cannabis and bail reform changes, but I did just want to take a moment and thank the clerks. I personally think the TV over here with the screen of all the agenda on there is a fantastic move and something we've needed for a long time.
You're welcome.
And thank you to the clerks. So that is all I have today.
Robert Girmaster?
I didn't have to put in a resolution for that, though.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say next week, Wednesday night, 6:00, Five Points, West Utica Neighborhood Association Meeting. Amy's going to be running with Anthony Testa there and we're going to have a guest speaker, Mr. Patterson. And I look forward to seeing everybody there. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and bearing with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Joe Bittar, third ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Just a reminder, the next South Utica Neighborhood Association is Monday, February 12th, 6:00 PM Parkway Recreation Center. Again, thanks, everyone, for coming and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bittar. Councilman Frank Carcone?
Just thank you for coming. I really don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Dennis Servin, fifth ward.
Our community meeting, for the community, Corn Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, will be next Tuesday, the 13th, at 6:00 at Midtown Utica Community Center. And also, I just wanted to let everybody know that Denver, Johnson Park Center and District 5 did receive the funding that they needed to finish the youth center on the corner of our 3 and on West Street. So that was a great thing because they were, they had shut down with all the construction that was going on, but they did get the funding to finish it, so that's a good thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Joe Petrus?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I want to say is I'll reiterate everybody else, thank everybody for coming tonight, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council-at-large, Mark Williamson, chief, master chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman-at-large, Samantha Collison-Motesta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman-at-large, Jack Lamedico?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everybody for coming today. I'm going to be, you know, looking into the marijuana issue that we're going to be talking about at the next committee meeting, as well as some of the other issues that are very important to myself and to my constituents. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to introduce Local Law Number 1 of 2024, a local law authorizing a property tax levy in the excess of the limit established in the General Municipal Law Section 3-C. We have a memo to the common council from Mayor Galeimi. I'm going to read. Despite all of our best efforts, we have to present you with an annual estimate that, if adopted, would exceed the taxed-imposed tax cap. Attached is a copy of proposed introductory Local Law 1 of 2024, which would authorize a property tax levy in excess of the limit established by the General Municipal Law override the tax cap. The state law allows the city to override the tax cap with the affirmative vote of 60% of the membership of the legislative body, six votes. It also requires that the local law providing for the override be enacted before the budget is adopted. It is important to remember that adoption of the local law does not mean that you agree to override the cap. It simply gives you the option to do so. If, in budget deliberations, you come up with a way to adopt a responsible budget that does not exceed the tax cap, then you don't need to use the override authority. In addition, adopting a tax cap is a precautionary measure, could protect the city in the event of an inadvertent error or the annual estimate becomes the default budget. Attaches a memo from the Assistant Corporation Council, Charles Brown, that further explains the process. The law requires that an override authorization be done by local law adopted before the budget because there are certain procedural requirements for a local law that only can occur after the council votes on it. It is important that this local law be adopted as early in the budget process as practable. I'm advised by the Corporation Council that it would be prudent to adopt the local law no later than March 1st. I hereby certify the necessity for immediate adoption of this local law pursuant to the section of 204 of the Municipal Home Rule. This law, this means that it may be adopted at the same meeting it is introduced with six votes from the common council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I recommend we put this in committee for future discussion.
Can I have a second? We'll lay it on the table.
That's the motion, yes. So let Jake's motion fall.
Move that to the, put that on the table. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone oppose? Introducing Local Law Number 2 of 2024, a local law to establish the boundaries of the council districts in the city of Utica. Can I have a motion in a second to lay on the table?
Mr. President, you first have to make a motion to fill in the blanks, Mr. President.
Can I have a mo?
So, just give me one second, I just got to find it, please. I got to find it. I apologize, I got way too many papers in front of me. I just need the local law. I know I got it here somewhere, I just got way too many pieces of paper in front of me. Okay, so it says see attached, the council district 1 will stay the same, council district 2 will stay the same, council district 3 would be amended, council district 4 will stay the same, council district 5 would be amended, council district 6 will stay the same. And then the only other thing, Deputy Clerk, so do you have the copies of the ones that I handed out? And this, this will just-
Yeah. Do you guys, do you guys want a copy of this? I was just going to put it as an attachment. No.
Okay, then it'll be laid on the table. The standard deviation for district 3 would be 13.8, the standard deviation for district 5 would be 18.9, and the attached listing would be to add district 3 to Holland Ave, Thomas Street, Grant Street, Scott Street, Faxton, and Jewel Place. And that would be laid on the table as is. Obviously, counsel, if you have the authority to make an amendment to this local law, the only thing is, is that you would have to relay it on the table after any amendments made. So the attachment will be there. We also have to call for the public hearing on February 21st of 2024. So that would just need to be recognized, that a public hearing would need to be called. So I would like to call for a public hearing on February 21st as well.
February 21st? Second?
If you look at the Local Law Number 2, a local law to establish the boundaries of the city of Utica, and presented, et cetera, right below that last line should be the words prior to the section 1, be in enact, in capital letters, be enacted by the common council of the city of Utica. That, because that enacts the local law. And I've discussed that with Mr. Giorgio and I don't know what was, why it wasn't in there, that was my, I didn't, I just got the proofread a little while ago. So if you would, someone would make a motion that on Local Law Number 2, right below the line there, and before it says see attached, it should say be enacted by the common council of the city of Utica.
I'd like to make a motion to make an amendment that says be enacted by the common council of the city of Utica.
Second.
And then I'd like to make a motion to lay it on the, to relay it on the table as amended.
Second.
Can we take a vote on the board, please? Make sure that all those are in favor of laying it on the table.
Eight yeas.
Proposed Resolution Number 1 sponsored by Councilman Bittar, a resolution seeking change in the New York State bail reform law, whereas in 2019, the state of New York enacted a bail reform law that eliminated cash bail for many misdemeanor and nonviolent felony charges with the hopes of reducing incarceration numbers throughout the state. And whereas, since the law took effect in January of 2020, and since its inception, state and local legislators have lobbied for changes to the law citing rising numbers in crime amongst the municipalities throughout the state, whereas the city of Utica has not been immune to the effects of the reform law in recent years and continues to see a rise in gun-related crime, most recently seeing yet another young person lose their life in a shooting. Whereas, it is clear to the citizens of Utica, there are too many crimes and too many young victims being injured and killed by other minors who are not subject to the criminal justice system when they are arrested for their crimes, which are serious in nature. There is no, truly no system in place that brings the justice and the education. Now it will be resolved if the common council for the city of Utica does hereby request and employ the officials who represent the people to reexamine policies that deal with the crime and its escalation in the New York State. Further, the state, federal authorities mentioned herein must take a hard look into the issues that truly affect the state of New York. This message is sent on the behalf of the citizens of Utica. Can I have a motion? And a second?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. I'd like to put a whereas before the last whereas, before the, after it says criminal justice system has collapsed, and whereas, an emphasis on raise the age is also a, an effect that has been imposed on the city of Utica.
Do we have a second on that amendment?
Second.
And then I'd like to make a motion to also amend afterward, it says must fight to change the law, or, it's above, Williams, and all local legislators, you know, must fight to change. Okay, that it also states that, to make an amendment to that, that says that these, this will also be forwarded to each municipality, each city in Oneida County. That is it.
Can we have a vote for the first amendment?
I'd like to, Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Move to amend the fourth whereas clause?
Just for formality purposes, just take a motion on the first amendment, the first amendment that I proposed, so just make sure that that goes through. So whether there was a motion in second, so just vote in favor of, or not in favor of that first amendment.
Can I have your votes?
Eight yeas adopted.
Okay, I would like to make the second amendment to forward to all municipalities. That was motioned and seconded. Now we just have to take a-
Votes, please.
So it's eight yeas to be amended.
And then I'll second Councilman Bittar's motion to make an amendment on the fourth whereas.
Mr. President, specifically with the fourth whereas clause, and too many young victims being injured and killed by other minors who strike are, to insert, may not be subject?
Thank you.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you. Your votes?
Eight yeas to be amended.
Proposed ordinance number 2. Can we have the vote?
Mr. President, may I qualify my vote?
Yes.
I've spoken about this extensively during the pre-meeting, but I do just want to add that I am for, there are changes I think that should be made with bail reform and raise the age. I think that this should have been policy-driven and it's unfortunate to me that it's not. I think language like attacking the very people who we are hoping to work with us to improve, I don't think that's the way. And I find this to be political grandstanding instead of just in the interest of the justice we're seeking and the safety we're seeking. So for that reason, tonight, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I have the floor?
Yes.
So again, I hear the word political grandstanding. We sat here at a public safety meeting last week and you heard the police, you heard all the law enforcement people tell you what they needed. This is simply a tool that our state officials can go to Albany with. As far as any local stuff that gets done here, the local stuff that we need to take care of comes from the state. Our local people can't do stuff in the street because they're handcuffed. So I just want to make that point clear. This is, this is just to help our local people and to help our police officers on the street. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Can I have your votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance number two, sponsored by Councilmember Ayala. No parking at all times. Be ordained that section two dash sixteen dash three sixty, scheduled E, no parking at all times be amended to include the following. On Broadway from Lafayette Street to Columbia Street along the Eastern curb line, no parking anytime. Can I have a motion to move? A second? Yep, can I have your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Resolution number three, sponsored by Councilmember Calissa Mottesta. A proclamation memorializing Louis R. Crotelli. Whereas Louis Robert Crotelli was born in Utica on May seventh, May twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty-six, a son of the late Dominic A. and Lena L. Esposito Crotelli. Lou was a nineteen forty-four graduate of Utica Free Academy and would go to serve his country in the U.S. Navy as an aviation ordnance man from September nineteen forty-four to June nineteen forty-six. And whereas, upon his return home, Lou attended Utica College in nineteen forty-seven and transferred to Clarkson College, where he graduated as a mechanical engineer in nineteen fifty-one. After graduating, Lou began a career with General Electric, initially in training program, where he had a three-month assignment in different product areas of the company, eventually landing in Utica GE's aerospace group for most of his thirty-three years as a product designer and reliability and quality manager until his retirement in nineteen eighty-five. On July second nineteen seventy-six, he was married to Leona M. Klein, a union of dedicated love blessed with forty-six years of marriage until her passing on June ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Lou's admiration was politics, and he served in a number of poignant elected positions that included city engineer, city civil service commissioner, Anida Herkimer Solid Waste Authority, and twelve years as an elected city of Utica councilman, serving most of those years as majority leader of the council. Through his leadership came the merging of two, of two like positions, treasurer and controller, into one controller position. Under his guidance also came the creation of the municipal golf commission that made the Valley View Golf Course was one of the most beautiful and challenging in the area. Lou initiated the term limits petition to limit years of service for all of city of Utica elected officials, and it was approved, approved by the voters in nineteen ninety-two. Lou passed away Sunday, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. He was ninety-seven. Be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica does hereby remember Louis R. Crotelli for all of his contributions to our great city. Further resolved that this tribute will forever be a part of the minutes of the common council meeting held this seventh day of February, two thousand twenty-four. Your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number four, sponsored by Councilmember Master and Williamson. Ordinance authorizing an agreement with the county of Anida for temporary purchasing, purchasing services. Whereas the city of Utica is temporarily without the services of purchasing agent, is actively, actively looking to replace same, but expects to take some time. Whereas, in the meantime, the city of Utica is in immediate need of the services of purchasing agent to handle purchasing for the city and its department. Further ordained, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to implement this resolution. Your votes, please? Motion to move in a second? Second? Your votes?
Nine yeas adopted.
Resolution number five, sponsored by Councilman Burmaster, calling for a public hearing on the sale of four nineteen Lincoln Avenue. Whereas the Urban Renewal Agency is the owner of four nineteen Lincoln Avenue. Whereas the Urban Renewal Agency is authorized to sell development parcels in said urban renewal area to prospective developers pursuant to the requirements set for in Article fifteen, Section five oh seven of the general municipal laws of the state of New York. Whereas, any offer to, yeah, to purchase four nineteen Lincoln Avenue has been received. Whereas the purchase of this price for this property is thirty thousand dollars. Your votes, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance number six. Ordinance approving the designation of Sanya on that. Can I have a motion to put it in committee?
I'll make a motion to put it in.
Second?
Just for clarification purposes, if we're making a motion to pull something out of committee or to put back into committee, that means that this wasn't in committee. So you don't have to make a motion for every piece of legislation to move forward. Does that make sense? Okay, because you just made a motion to put it in committee, meaning all other legislation is on the agenda for the docket. That doesn't have to be moved. Okay?
Ordinance number seven, sponsored by Councilmember Ayala. No parking at all times be ordained that section two dash sixteen, three sixty, scheduled E, no parking at all times be amended to include the following. Eagle Street north side from Staben Street to a point fifty feet westerly on Eagle Street. Can I have your, a motion, ask for a motion in a second?
Motion to move.
Can I have your votes?
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number eight. Ordinance authorizing the sale and/or disposal of surplus city equipment, be it ordained pursuant to section seven, that, point zero zero seven of the Utica City Charter. The mayor on his authorized representative is hereby authorized to sell the city-owned personal property described below. Such property should be offered for sale after public advertisement to the highest responsible bidder or in whatever manner the mayor or his authorized representative deems most appropriate. Will go down, further ordained the property to be sold and disposed of as described as follows. Miscellaneous equipment located in the garage of City Hall. Miscellaneous equipment located in the basement of City Law, City Hall. DPW two thousand five Bobcat S two two zero turbo. UPD two thousand nine Ford Crown Victoria. Vehicles beyond its useful life for the police service. Two thousand three GMC. Two thousand four E three fifty. Motion in a second?
Motion to move?
Your votes?
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number nine. Ordinance prohibits the public consumption of candies, be it ordained that article should be amended by adding section two dash fifteen forty-seven.
Motion to commit?
Can I have a second? Placed in committee? Ordinance number ten, amending section two dash twelve fifty-three, residential dwelling registration fees of the Utica City called or ordinance.
Motion to put number ten and eleven into committee? Actually, do you want to dismiss, discharge them and then just reintroduce them as new pieces since they're ordinances? Okay, so I'll, we'll keep the number ten, and we're just going to dismiss legislation number eleven. Yeah, number ten in committee and then discharge number eleven.
Is there a second to place in committee?
Proposed Resolution Number Twelve, placement of honorary street sign. Whereas in, is the custom of the common council of the Utica, of the city of Utica to recognize those who have had a positive impact on the community. Whereas, when Gary Campbell opened the dinghy, he did so without realizing the lasting impact it would have on the community. Over the next forty-seven years, it would become a staple in the city of Utica, bring in lasting memories to its patrons. Be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica authorizes the placement of an honorary street sign at the corner of Sunset Avenue and Lincoln Avenue, naming the first two sixteen feet of Sunset Avenue due north Camper's Way to honor and recognize him for the many years of dedicated service to the city. Further resolved that this resolution be inscribed in the minutes of the common council meeting held this seventh day of February, two thousand twenty-four. Motion in a second?
Mr. President, first, I'd like to make a motion to waive the Thursday rule.
Second? Thursday rule has been waived. Can I have your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed Resolution Number Thirteen. Resolution authorizing adjustment to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four solid waste service charge. Whereas pursuant to section one subdivision twelve, a local law number one of nineteen ninety, a person may appeal to a determination made regarding the levy of the solid waste service charge. Be it resolved, the common council of the city of Utica hereby approves the applications for adjustment to the city of Utica's solid waste service charges for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four as follows. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to put it in committee.
Placed in committee. Resolution number fourteen, New York State Medicaid Equity Now. Whereas Medicaid pays thirty percent less than the actual cost of health care for low-income seniors, children from low-income families, and people with disabilities in New York State. Whereas more than seven million New Yorkers suffer when Medicaid isn't fully reimbursed, facing difficulty assessing health care services, mental health services, longer wait times in emergency rooms, and dangerous staffing shortages at our hospitals and nursing homes. Whereas the Medicaid under, underpayments are already severely harming low-income New Yorkers, especially in our black and Latino communities, leading to worse health outcomes and shorter life expectancies. Be it resolved that as elected officials representing the residents of Utica, it is our conviction that New York State budget discussions proceed, and with forty-three billion in reserves, we must fully fund Medicaid reimbursements at six billion for hospitals and one point six billion for nursing homes to fully cover the actual cost of care. If New York increases Medicaid reimbursements, the federal government will pay for half of the cost, reducing the cost to New York taxpayers by fifty percent. Fixing Medicaid underpayments will ensure that our hospitals and nursing homes can hire the staff they need, and our seniors, children, and mothers and babies will receive the care they deserve. Okay, second. Are we putting this in committee?
Can you take a vote on this? Because, I mean, we, this is the first time that we got it. There, there's, I mean, if there was an amendment...
Make a motion to move?
No, but if there would, I don't even know who you're sending it to. It doesn't even say that on there. Who, who are you passing it for?
What?
Well, it doesn't say that on there.
New York State Medicaid Equity Now.
Right, but who are you sending it to? New York State Medicaid? You send it to New York State Assembly?
New York State. It's New York State because they're going to be actually looking at the budget, and this is...
Okay, so who in New York? You're just going to send it to everybody in New York State? That doesn't make sense.
Make a motion to move?
It's for Governor Hope.
Are, are we amending this piece? So Council...
So what do you want?
Okay, but she has a motion on the floor.
Can I recall my motion to, well, make the motion to amend?
You want to make a motion to amend?
Yes. No, that's no.
A motion to amend?
What's the second of the motion?
Mary Emotion. Yes.
Can I have a second? Placed in committee? They got a vote on it?
Make a motion to move?
Yep. Please have your votes?
Motion to amend approved. We're going to vote on this now.
Motion to move?
It's very straightforward.
Can we have a second?
Jack second.
Yeah, can we?
Call the vote.
Can we have the vote?
This is for the piece.
This, this is for the medic, the Medicaid. So we're voting on the Medicaid, which is Resolution fourteen. Nine yeas adopted.
Resolution number fifteen. Resolution nominating a candidate to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. Be it resolved pursuant to section one two two six dash E of the Public Authorities Law of the state of New York and the agreement between the city of Utica Common Council and the county of Anida Board of Legislators. The common council hereby nominates the following individual as a candidate for appointment to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. Dennis Bova, four seven one Roseclaire Drive, Utica, New York. Further resolved, the city of Utica is hereby directed, for, for three years, to a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Further resolved, the city of Utica is hereby directed to transmit the name of the council nominee to the clerk of the county legislator and retain a record specifying the date of delivery. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I have something to say.
Yes.
We agree that we're going to go into committee until the person from the water board could come and speak until Mr. Bova sends us a letter, which we were waiting for.
Do you want, guys want it in committee? Is anyone opposed? Have a motion to adjourn?